Now, 6:17, and we will reconvene our regular meeting. We're going to go directly into the public hearing. Dr. Head, are you, Jennifer, going to handle this?
I think...
Talking about the proposed budget and then the presentation of the 2017-18 proposed budget.
Yes, I'm sorry. Do you want to... would you come on up, please? I'm going to ask Jennifer to give an overview of the budget. This is, there should be no new information. You've had the budget book for the overview, which is 94 pages. If you're out in the audience, it's 94 pages long. The actual budget is much longer than that and much deeper than that. But, so if you'll go through the highlights of the budget.
Yes, this is just the highlights of the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget. We gave a more extensive outline of the framework that we built this budget with in the budget workshop that was presented to the board in June. And then, yeah, almost two weeks ago now, the budget report was made available. It's publicly available electronically on our website, and then we do also have hard copies. So just an overview first, beginning with revenues. In the FY 18 budget, which starts September 1st, 2017, goes through August 31st, 2018, we have projected 152 million of tax revenues for operations. This is 10 million more than forecasted fiscal year 2017 tax revenues, and this is based on a flat tax rate of 10.78 cents. Then for tuition and fees, we have budgeted 126 million. This is 11 million more than the forecasted FY 17 revenues for tuition and fees. This 126 million, it includes a fee increases that this board already approved back in March, but it also includes an additional increase in the out-of-district and the out-of-state international fees of $10 per credit hour effective spring of 2018. This has not yet been approved, and the request to do that, to approve that, will be presented to the board next month in September. But the assumption of that fee increase is included in the 126 million. And then the third major revenue source is state appropriations there. We have 78 million, and that is 4 million above forecasted FY 17 revenues. Highlights for expenditures, the items that I have listed here is items that are receiving new funding in FY 18, that is a million or greater. So here we have 4.2 million for a 2% raise for full-time and part-time staff with a minimum of 750 for full-time. There's another 4.2 million for new programs, programs and operations at new facilities that will be opening in fiscal year 2018. 2.3 million for 30 new faculty, 1.8 million for some employee reclassifications, and then you can see a total of 2 million has been allocated to the six campuses, 1 million based on growth and 1 million based on performance. And then finally, there is a million-dollar increase in the annual revenue bond debt service payment. So in summary, this proposed fiscal year 2018 budget that is in front of you is a $427 million budget. Of this, there's 366 million in operating expenditures, 53 million for debt service, and 7.5 million addition to reserves. And what that does to our cash reserves, we are currently forecasting to end this fiscal year, end of this month, August 31st, 2017, at 14.9%. This addition of 7.5 million in fiscal year 18 would put us, next year, August 31st, 2018, at 16%. That was the goal we set for building this budget, and that would move us further towards the ultimate goal of hitting a 20% cash reserve. Finally here, just the budget timeline. As you can see, first is today, where we are requesting the board to adopt this proposed budget, and then in September, we will request the board to consider increasing the out-of-district and out-of-state international fee by the $10 per credit hour. We will also present the certified assessed values. Those we're expecting to receive around August 22nd or 23rd, so we will be presenting those. And then at the October board meeting is when the board would be requested to adopt the tax rate.
Excuse me. The increase in the debt service for the maintenance, or the...
Revenue bonds.
Revenue bonds?
Mm-hmm.
Is that over and above the actual bond debt service? Or is that because...
There, yeah, there are, if I go back here, this 53 million is for the general obligation debt service that does sit separately. The revenue bonds is paid for out of operating expenditures, so yes, that $1 million increase is incorporated in where you see the 366 million of operating expenditures. That's the key difference between the revenue bonds and general.
It's the way the payment structure was set up. We were paying, yeah, we were paying 10 and 1/2, then we paid down some of it in the payment, I think for two years, was 7.5, and then it jumped back up to 8.5. That was the restructuring, the way it was.
Yes.
So...
Yeah, you had some refunding savings last year and this year that brought it down to 7.5.
I think it will be, is it 10 and 1/2, I mean, 8 and 1/2 next year, and then it drops down again after that?
I don't remember.
Kind of an irregular schedule of payments on it.
Okay.
That concludes my presentation.
So, can you talk just for a second about what you see with, or what we're seeing with assessed value, so the board kind of understands where we're headed? We're going to talk more about this in October, just in general terms, where we're seeing assessed value headed.
Yes, assessed value, I mean, since fiscal year 2014, growth in assessed values has been very significant, hitting a high of, I think, about 13%. But for next year, we're forecasting it to be at 4.9% growth, which is clearly a significant decline from what was very, very good growth, but we are seeing it come back to normal trend levels. And I would expect that to remain flat or even decline further, that growth in following years.
When you say growth, are you referring to new value as opposed to an increase of...
I guess I'm referring to both, new value and growth in existing properties.
So in Harris County, though, with old growth, it's about, with, well, with regular assessed value, it's about 3.75% right now in the growth?
Yes, in Harris County, it's...
And 75% of our money comes from, or our tax value comes from Harris County. The other 25, Montgomery's...
Montgomery's was 7 something percent?
Yeah. It has slowed down considerably in the last couple of years. Now, we still have the new growth in there, and I think we're projecting 2.5 in the new growth.
Yes.
But what we're seeing, the overall trend on this right now, anyway, especially in Harris County, is a pretty significant drop in assessed value.
Yes.
The growth rate, not a drop, but of the growth rate, which makes it more, I think, more important to us that we keep our eye on the five-year outlook on this and with the, with the new facilities we have coming up and just thinking about how large we're getting, which is what we've been working on. So I, we're going to be in good shape one way or another. And where we kind of see the state, it depends on, I can say oil prices, but it really depends on sales tax, but that depends on the price of oil. So as we're looking at this over an extended period of time, we just have to be very thoughtful. You have to pay attention to our finances. We're going to be in good shape, but we have to pay, it's like your household, you have to pay attention to it. So, because we're still, we, we want to keep the tax rate really stable, and we want to keep the tuition rates pretty stable. So, that's our goal, anyway, so.
Jennifer, I have a question. Dr. Hozie mentioned when I first came on the board that he requested this big budget book, and he read every page, and he's not going to read, not going to do that again. So I want to just, I want to let you know that I read every page of the, of the data that you sent.
This?
Yeah. Well, it's whatever that, you gave us a...
Spreadsheets.
Spreadsheets and all that stuff.
Okay.
And the thing that I was really enthused about, and I made several assumptions, that a whole bunch of folks got involved with the budget, down and including the deans and all the way up, which I think's great, that folks get involved with their input on where the money should be spent. And it's two things that I really liked. One of them is, I saw the money tied to our goals. Say we're going to do some things, let's tie the money to it and measure it. The other thing that I questioned a little bit, and I apologize, I try not to ask questions from here, I try to send my questions in ahead of time. You have a sheet in that you call the expenditure budget, and you show by various functions how the money was allocated the last two years plus the coming year. And in most of the categories, as an example, in instructions, student services, and et cetera, there were increases in spending for those departments. But there were some departments or some areas where the spending was decreased, such as student services and academic services. And I'm not real sure I understand what all of those, what all, what all of those mean. But what I've come to the conclusion on, though, that if you spend more in one area, unless you have unlimited sources, you got to cut somewhere else. And, and I feel pretty comfortable telling if I'm wrong, that when we made cuts to those two categories in terms of percentages, spending, that the deans and et cetera, you know, made sure that student support would remain at a high level so that our students will be successful, and we can still be happy about the type of product that we're producing. And am I assuming something, or may I hear your comments, please?
Yeah, I think if I have, so you said you looked at it by functional classification...
Yes.
In the budget report, page 69, I think this is the chart. I'm not sure if this is the chart you're referring to, but this has the breakdown by functional classification.
Right, right.
And we, student services, spending in student services did increase, and academic support was flat. So I think where we see, do see some, oh, and actually going the other way, we have, so the most, largest increase is in instructional...
Right, and I agree with that.
And we're flat on academic support, we're, it's a small decrease, so student services, it's...
Yeah, 1.1%, it's real small.
Right, and actually from last year, it increased slightly from last year, and we have institutional support increasing. So really, the only category I see with a significant decrease in it is our auxiliary, which, that's a function of how much auxiliary revenues we're bringing in. We can't spend more than the auxiliary revenues brought in, and it's the revenues that have declined there. So that's why you'll see the auxiliary spending decline. But otherwise, in the primary categories here, instructional has increased, academic support is flat, student services is essentially flat, and institutional support has increased in spending.
Yeah. Well, academic supposed to go down to 16.5% in 2018, according to the polls, but that's not, only thing I want to be assured of, that our students will not suffer in terms of the type of services that they're going to get to, that will assist them in being successful.
Right, oh, I see what you, so the spending is flat, it's the percentage...
Yeah.
...that has decreased, and I would hope that means, you know, as the system does get larger, I hope we use our resources more effectively as we get larger. So, in some ways, it makes sense that sometimes the, the support services can do more at a larger system with a smaller percentage of the budget, as long as the dollars can, because the dollars have stayed flat. So they, they did not get a cut in dollars.
Yeah, yeah, but strictly percentage. And I'm okay, as long, you're saying that it will remain the same or equal to, I'm fine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, part of it's just economy of scale. Just because we add students does not mean we have to add additional services, although ideally, everybody would like that. With some, this money gets tighter and tighter, that may or may not happen, so.
Oh, when my second kid was born, it happened to me, too, so, so I understand that.
One thing on the auxiliary, one reason the auxiliary income is down, because bookstore, bookstore sales are off. And one of, we're taking a look at that, because what's happening right now is that somewhere between 30 and 40% of our students are not purchasing textbooks, which is another issue we'll, we'll talk about. And that, to me, has to do with the price, a lot has to do with the price of textbooks. Some of them are up to $400, so we're taking a look at that. And so, I want to point out to the board that our operating budget, that's counting the, the operating budget, debt service, our construction budget next year will be about 150 or so, 150 million. Then if you throw in grants, we're pretty close to 600 million a year in our, in our budgeting. So, we are a very big, very big operation, so it's very complex. What you saw even on the spreadsheets, there's more, much more behind all that, because if you want to know how we do everything from postage to printing, that comes from the colleges and works its way up. What we look at are general trends, and we try to monitor that up here to make sure that the colleges are within ranges and they stay within their budgets. They're normally given a number, a target, then they put their budgets together. We handle the personnel piece up here. We, we give them faculty and generally tell them how many new people can be added or not added. So it's a very lengthy and complex. We started on the budget back, well, before you came. We've been working on the budget probably for four or five months at least, so, at least that.
Yeah, I mean, we started...
And this is the earliest we've finished the budget, so, by design, so.
Jennifer?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just one clarification. In the past, cash reserves have generally run about 16%, and now you want them to go to 20. And to the questions that might come, why not take that difference between 16% and 20 and give it in increased benefits to students or faculty or staff? And your response is that the people who give us the AAA ratings...
S and P.
...want it at 20%.
Yes, that was their recommendation, was that, that we have a 20% cash reserve?
That, that came from both, the recommendation from Standard and Poor's and JP Morgan was that we, we strive for 20%. We don't, that's, that's a board decision. We've just arbitrarily put that in there. We've got that in our five-year plan. Keep in mind that every year, that's going to be approaching. Each percentage point means we have to take about $4 million, approaching $4 million off the top of the budget. So of all the dollars we get, roughly 4 million is going to go into the reserve. That, that is a board policy decision. What, we want to be careful about the percentage we have in there, and I know that Dr. Scott was in some of those meetings, and I think Dr. Smith...
Yeah.
Were in some of those meetings where we recommended that. We want to maintain our AAA credit rating, which we can do at 16. I'm not worried about that, but we'll have that discussion probably in October about...
So, I think what might be helpful with maintaining, with maintaining clarity around that, our reserve, right, between the 16 and 20, or whether it's at the 16, is to develop some sort of cost of capital of what's required of that? How much money is it saving us to maintain our AAA rating and then be able to pass that along versus what we could use that money towards, that, that 4% gap, something along those lines? That way, we can have it out there, we could say, listen, it's just a dollars and cents argument.
Yes, okay.
Excellent job, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, your staff, and all of the other folks, you know, that worked on this gigantic project.
Yeah, the finance staff, if I could, at System Office and at all of the colleges, put a lot of work into this, and everyone coordinated very well, and I would definitely want to say a huge thank you to all of them.
Yeah, and I'm going to use my favorite saying, you probably haven't heard it, maintain the momentum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Huh? Okay. Do we have any comments from citizens or people in the audience on the, Mr. Wilson?
I'd like to, first of all, thank Chancellor Head and the board for giving the public an opportunity to speak. I think that's very important, to be transparent. Speaking of that, my typical practice before the board meeting is I go and look at the agendas, see what's coming up, and of course, I saw that the budget was there, and so I went hunting for it, and I was hoping that there'd be a link there with the agendas, but there wasn't. So I went in and searched for 2018 budget. I thought that was kind of reasonable, but it didn't yield any results. So anyway, was able to send an email to Helen, she responded very quickly, pointed me to the page, and it was under financial reports, and it was kind of interesting. And, you know, yeah, it makes sense, it's a financial report, and then you go down further, there's budget reports, and so fiscal year 2018. So I guess if I would have, you know, searched for fiscal year 2018, I might have found it. But, so, you know, you have to think about how the regular citizens go and try to find things and make it, you know, a little bit more available. Now, with that said, I really, I read through all the pages, too, just like you did, Dr. Smith, and one of the things that came out, and it just stuck to me, I typically look at overhead, because that's one of the things that can get bloated in, in many institutions and agencies. But the only thing that I found, and no offense to Mario, but it has to do with legal support, there was, on page 18, it talked about how there was 732,000 additional for legal support. And I went down and looking, back on page 42, it talked about general counsel, and there's an increase of roughly $350,000 from 2017 to 2018. And then there was a new category of VR general counsel that is being allocated $545,000. Again, that's on page 42 as well. And when I looked at the budget overall, I'm glad that y'all, that the administration broke out the new things. I understand exactly, it costs money to do these new things, and it's going to generate revenue, so I understand all of that. This is one that I would like to see the board have a little bit of discussion about, exactly what that increased legal fees are for, because I look back at 2016, and we were at $1 million, and by 2018, what is proposed is 2.5 million. So that's a significant increase. You know, we're talking about a 150% increase in two years. So that is what I had hoped that the board would address. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Now, it's not only... Mario, come here.
You don't care if you address that, do you?
Yeah. Do you have a problem?
So, the, and you're going to have to excuse me, I'm kind of losing my voice. So, the first part is that we've actually, in the last fiscal year, we've actually created an entire new division, right? And so that division, this last year, I've actually been funding two divisions out of the budget of one division. And so I've been funding the Office of the General Counsel and the Office of Governance, Audit, and Compliance out of the General Counsel's budget. So we have an entire new division that's there to help us with, again, our governance, audit, and compliance. And so the idea there is that we, if we spend more money upfront on overhead, we can actually spend less money on fines and lack of compliance. And to use the said phrase, that the only thing more expensive than not spending money on compliance, than spending money on compliance, is when you don't spend the money on compliance. And so, for example, as we've talked about many times, there was a reason that we recently had to pay 2.2 million in taxes to HCAD, right? And if we would have had somebody who was dedicated to auditing those leases over the years, perhaps we could have saved ourselves the 2.2 million that we had to pay in to HCAD. And so the idea that I recommended to Chancellor Head was to create a separate group that would audit those things. Some of the things that we've talked about, for example, the construction procurement procedures, those were created, and those folks sort of audit that. We also have now, I believe, a very successful and very trusted source in governance and compliance, where employees who want another avenue other than HR now have someone sort of above and besides HR to sort of take their complaints to. And so you're actually seeing less money being spent on litigation and legal fees than we have in the past, because we're spending more money upfront on compliance.
So that's housed, it's a separate office, but it's housed under legal office. So, that's why you see some...
Okay. Thanks. Mario, okay. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wilson. Any other comments from citizens? If not, we're going to adjourn the public hearing and move right into our regular monthly First item on the agenda deals with, with item 10, Cal. Cal, are you reporting for the committee?
Yeah.
Okay, would you, would you tell us what the outcome is or your recommendation on item?
Are we handling both together, or each separately, right?
I would do them separately.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, this was a tough one, because we've had this in our hands, the grievance committee, for several months, and we were unified, divided, divided, unified, but we did come to a decision, which is, the grievance committee has decided that the case of Tashima Jones should not be sent to the full board for review.
That's number 11, though.
Oh, oh, okay. So, case of Jeffrey Wax, we decided that 14 months advance notice of a non-renewal change of contract status was sufficient, and we therefore do not find the need to refer the matter to the full board for review.
Any comments, board members? If not, could you, if no comments, could you make a motion on that?
Okay. A motion to accept the board's, the committee's recommendation?
The board not to hear it.
For the board not to hear the appeal?
The grievance, yes.
Grievance?
Yes. You have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that the board does not hear the grievance by Mr. Jeremy Wax. Are there any comments, questions from the board members?
Jeffrey.
I mean, I'm sorry, Jeffrey Wax. Any comments, questions? If not, all those in favor, both by the usual sign?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion's closed. Okay, number 11, Cal.
Sorry about that. So, the grievance committee has determined that the case of Tashima Jones should not be sent to the full board for review. This one requires a bit more lengthy explanation, I think, because we did go back and forth quite a bit on this one. As, we understand that questions were raised in this case regarding the nature of the procedures related to the grievance policy, but no claim was made nor proven. procedures related to the grievance policy, but no claim was made nor proven that there was a violation of the grievance policy or procedures carried out in accordance with that policy. To say one disagrees with the policy is not the same thing as saying that the policy was violated. Before adopting a policy, the public is given several opportunities to make comment on the proposed policy. In the matter of the grievance policy, the College and Grievance Committee took additional steps to meet with various stakeholders to ensure it was the right policy for the College. The objections we hear now were not raised at that time. The Board and the Grievance Committee have to decide whether the grievance policy was followed by the administration. Any other, any other claims lay outside the purview of the Board, as it lays outside what is stipulated a policy. As the Grievance Committee Chair and as a member of the Policy Committee, I would encourage all interested parties to contact me directly, should you have any questions regarding this policy and revisions that should be considered. Finally, I would advise that anyone appealing a decision to the Board should focus on whether procedural irregularity, as defined by the grievance policy, was violated. Incorporating claims that cannot be considered by the Board in the Grievance Appeal format is unproductive for all involved.
Would you put that in the form of a motion?
Motion for the Board to accept the Committee's recommendation not to hear the appeal of Tashima Jones.
Thank you, Cal. Second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we do not hear the appeal of Mrs. Jones. All those, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign?
Aye.
Opposeds?
Opposed.
Okay, let the record show that Ken and Laura oppose. Okay, moving on. Thank you, Committee. At this point, we have our, Dr. Ted, do you have any introductions or special guests?
Yes, I want to introduce and welcome Beth Marshall from Community Impact. I do not, oh, there she is right there, okay. Welcome again. That's it.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Leanne Nutt has a new Vice President, sorry.
Oh, okay, good.
Dr. Smith, Dr. Head, and members of the Board, it's my pleasure to introduce you to Dr. Scott Stallman. Scott will join us up here. He started August 1st, he's been here a minute, and has been hit the ground running. So we're very glad to have Scott. He joins us from Illinois. He has 12 years of administrative and executive experience. He has a PhD in Higher Ed Administration from Illinois State. Masters of Education in Adult and Higher Ed Administration, got that in 2006, from the University of Missouri, and a Bachelor of Science in Health and Restaurant Management, Hotel Restaurant Management, which he got in 1995. Has over eight years of teaching experience, full-time and part-time. He's been a Department Chair, has held progressively responsible positions. He joins us from Lincolnland Community College, where he was most recently as an Associate Vice President, and part of his responsibilities there were to oversee five centers. So he'll understand how the, how the systems work. He brings with him experience we were looking for with K-12 partnerships, dual credit, strategic planning pathways, all of those things we're working on. Scott brings that, and we're glad to welcome him to Lone Star College.
All right. Scott, would you like to say a few words? It's not required.
Sure, I would. Yeah, no, no.
I'm going to put you on the spot.
No, you're fine. I just, I'm really happy to be here, it's my third day, and it's, it's, it's great to be at a place, I was, I was lucky enough to be invited to the summit, and the Closing Loop Summit, and before I actually, before my start date. And it gave me a really strong understanding of all of the things that are happening here at the College, and it's extremely impressive, the way that, that decisions are made using data. I was most impressed by that, so, and obviously, Dr. Nutt's been great, and Quentin Wright has been really helpful in the transition as well, so I want to thank them, and thank you for having me here tonight.
Well, we're glad to have you, and I tell you, Quentin's going to watch you, make sure that you treat.
He told me that today, he said, I'm watching.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, thank you, thank you for joining us. At this point, I would like to get the minutes of our July 2017 workshop and regular meeting minutes approved. Can we, can I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the minutes of our July 10th workshop and regular meeting. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, oh, I'm sorry, yes. There's three, yes, there was three people that, can't remember who all, it was you, Ken, and who was the third person that was?
Myself, Scott.
Scott, I'm sorry, okay. All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that. Okay, Mr. Chancellor, do you have any, a special report or any announcements you'd like to make?
A couple of updates. So, enrollment for the fall, we're up 7% right now. It's still, we still have six weeks to go or so beforehand, so we will continue to work on the enrollments all the way up to the start of school. Our convocation is August the 22nd?
Yeah, thanks, Ed.
Right, okay. So, Board members, if you're, we'd like to have you there, if you can be there. We have Campus Cary started on August the 1st, and I think that we roll that out, we spent so much time rolling that out, that, I mean, we're, we'll see. So, we still, Rand, are we still trying to clarify anything, or questions are still going to come up, I know that, but? The, we had a large gathering last week led by Dr. Alicia Harvey Smith, and Scott mentioned it, closing the loop. So once a year, we, we bring student services and instructional and administrative people in across the system, and we talk about what we want to do, what's working, what's not working, and I'm, I'll ask Alicia to come in at the next meeting and kind of give an update, what we, what came out of that, out of that session. But, one of the nice things about working in a large system is, we have internal peer groups, and we can see what's working at one, I mean, we operate as a college, but we know, we've got our locations that, it's okay to have some flexibility in our system. So we talk a lot, it's very important that we, it's part of our culture that we work together and talk and make sure we know what each other are doing, and work together on these, on student success in particular. So, Alicia, if you have a plan on coming in. A major announcement for us is on August the 24th, we have LSC Astros Night. Dr. Scott's son is going to throw out the first ball this year, so he's been out practicing with his son, I'm sure of that. And I don't know who's more nervous, you or him? Yeah. It's somebody who's been through this myself. And one, one quick item, so, been spending some time with the Legislature again. The, really about the only issue that might have some impact on us is property tax reform. And you've heard where we are, the, the growth is slowing down, our assessed value is slowing down. And we knew from back in September, the Lieutenant Governor had given us a heads-up about the property tax reform, and what, and so did Senator Bettencourt. So, we've been, we've been budgeting for that probability. As it turns out, we thought we, the property, the law might be changed, but as it turns out, our assessed value is about there anyway. So this hasn't been a major adjustment for us. And in the, in the proposals last week, in the House side of this, the, well, two things have happened, the public schools have been exempted from the property tax outside, once the 8% is still there, but they've been exempted from the rollback, and now community colleges were exempted in the House bill. So, we'll see. And the, and the school districts, as you know, where they, that's where the most of the property tax come from, so we're going to see how that happens. I just don't know. One way or another, I think we're fine here, whatever the decision is, we're, we're fine with it, whether it be 4% or 5%, and I think the latest you told me was that 5%, they're back up to 5% or 6%. So with our growth slowing down, we're, we're, we're fine one way or another. So, we're still waiting to see some of the changes in Washington and how that impacts us. Right now, I just don't see anything, the, I know you've heard that Pell Grant was cut, but actually, that was a Pell Grant surplus. There was a 10, I think a $10 billion, $9.5 billion surplus in Pell Grant funds. That means that had not been awarded in previous years, so they were holding it. So they've cut that back, I think they're taking $3.5 billion out of that. So it, it's, it's not totally accurate to say that Pell Grant funding per se was cut, that's not the, our Pell Grants next year will remain, I think they're remaining the same, I don't know, I think, I think the maximum will remain the same, I don't think that's being cut. So, that's kind of, we're just keeping an eye on that to see what happens. So, so far, we haven't seen what, what impact that would have, though.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ted. I want to also mention, and I know all of you all saw the article in the Chronicle, I guess it was Tuesday, concerning Campus Cary, and there was a, an outstanding article about Lone Star's efforts and et cetera. So I want to, I, in fear of missing some individuals, and Rand's name was mentioned, the police chief, and, and I was real proud that Lone Star was highlighted, rather than some of the other community colleges. So, that meant that we are doing a lot of things right, and I, again, I like commending people, I commend you for a job well done, and all of the other folks that worked with you guys, with putting, putting the policy together, and again, maintain the momentum. Board members, you have any announcements or things that you would like to report on? Yes?
May I say something nice about Mario?
Yeah, well, well, fine, not for Mario, was it?
Mario, can I say something nice about you? I'm not sure he's going to live the night, you hear that voice? I want to talk about, I always believe in paying credit where it's deserved, to people who are doing an outstanding job. And Mario has been absolutely brilliant. I have to work with him a lot, on a lot of different issues, and I'm in touch with him not every day, but almost every day. And I want you to know what a brilliant guy we have here. Not only, for example, in the grievance policy that we just talked about, and procedural irregularities, he doesn't make them irregularities. You have to get up early to get ahead of Mario. The other thing I want you to know is the sexual assault Title IX policy for this college for adjudication of sexual assault cases is absolutely brilliant, what he designed. And when I told the people at the Association of Community College Trustees what it is that Mario had drafted, they were really excited about it, and said, let us have a copy of that, we want to distribute what he wrote to general councils of all community colleges. It's that good, it is that good. We're going to have that meeting in Las Vegas in, in September, Steve and I and Mario are going to speak to that issue. But the people at, at the Association of Community Colleges are eager to hear how it is that we handle and adjudicate sexual assault cases. I think the job that we do here is better, well, as good as or better than any other institution of higher education in the country. Yale, Harvard, Princeton, Northwestern could take a lesson from us on the fairway to adjudicate sexual assault. Our policy is that good, and it's his fault.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Did I say that the way you told me to?
All right, thank you for that. I know Mario, I know Mario, appreciate that.
He only got away with it because we don't have football teams.
I have one thing I want to, want to mention, I was invited to only one open house this year, and I went last night, or, what night was that?
Tuesday.
Huh?
Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday, I'm getting old, I can't even remember what happened last night. I went over to Victory Campus, and I was really amazed at the professionalism displayed by the staff. I was also amazed at the number of people from the community that attended the open house. And it included people like the Mayor of the City of Houston, the Chairman of the Near Northwest Management Association, a city councilman or two, and their only question was, let's keep this place running the way it is tonight, because it was truly a sight to be seen. And I would like to thank Mario for inviting me over.
Gerald.
See, I told you, I can't remember stuff. Gerald, I apologize. But thanks, Gerald, for inviting me over, to the open house. I had fun, and I hope to be invited again next year. Thank you.
Wait a minute, there's one last thing. I opened my mailbox today, and look what's in it. That's Dental Dave.
Okay.
That's Dental.
Okay, congratulations. Okay, Helen, do we have any citizen participation?
I just wanted to explain my absence from last month's board meeting.
Oh, you don't, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so, in early February, Bethany, my wife, that 14-year-old girl who asked a 16-year-old boy to walk him to, lock her, changed his life forever, was diagnosed with cancer. And since February, she's been undergoing chemotherapy treatments. And the night of our last board meeting, she got to ring her bell. And if you've never been on the 15th floor of MD Anderson and in the lymphoma clinic, you will know what that means, which is, she finished chemotherapy. We still have... A few of you knew, I appreciate the concerns, and I also appreciate you not spreading the word, as I requested that you didn't, so that I could just come here and get the job done. So if I've seen unfocused or soft the past few months, that's probably been true. But get ready, because all is right in the world.
Thank you, and God bless you and your family. Helen, do we have any citizens wishing to speak?
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, thank you for allowing me to speak. This is a pretty big notebook, there's a lot of evidence in it. I hope you've read every word of it, I hope you've read some of it, because it's the basis for why you turned my appeal down tonight. And a lot of time was spent preparing evidence for you to take my circumstances into merit. Ride him hard. Three words which are indelibly burned in my heart and mind forever. These words formed a conspiracy to get rid of me at Lone Star College, and they were uttered by former President Audrey Levy, who is no longer with this college, for obvious reasons, and Dean Kimberly Hubbard, who is. When one person talks to another and plans to do something, it's a conspiracy. In this case, a conspiracy to destroy my reputation and my career. The conspirators, Hubbard and Levy, acted in concert.
Excuse me just a minute, if you could refrain from mentioning names, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. The conspirators acted in concert knowingly, willfully, and intentionally. They wouldn't stop until they had venuefully trumped up and manufactured a false reality based upon nothing but a series of incidents which are or were distortions of the truth. Unnamed person acting upon the orders of the college president created to what amounted to be a relentless campaign of persecution, an obsession which any reasonable and prudent person would find unconscionable. I have, since I began working at Lone Star College for five years ago, been a victim of bullying perpetrated... perpetrated by unnamed person who acted in concert with unnamed person in such a fashion as to purposely make my life at Lone Star College as difficult as possible. I don't know why this started or what I possibly could have done to be the recipient of this type of abuse. As my superior, this unnamed person has attacked my dignity, integrity, and competence. She has done so repeatedly, subjecting me to emotional abuse subtly and bluntly, all too often being falsely accused of wrongdoing and persistently humiliated privately and publicly. It is nothing best described but psychological terror. This has been mobbing and bullying by these two individuals, which has affected my emotional well-being and physical health. This has gone on for four years. Dr. Head knew about this two and a half years ago and did nothing to intervene. Lone Star College has had the opportunity to address the behavior and hostile environment and hasn't done so. Call it what you will, folks. Ride him hard, or let's do anything we can to get me to quit, has been a witch hunt and a vendetta on the part of unnamed individual who took a personal affront to the fact that her decision to issue a corrective action and place me on an action plan was jettisoned by one of her superiors, a gentleman who is sitting in this room right now, whom I can't name. This individual took a personal affront and acted in a retaliatory manner to twist the truth and distort the facts as a way of creating a record comprised of falsehoods and innuendos. And they are all in this book. There isn't one scintilla of evidence that justifies the action this college took against me. This unnamed person was a train out of control, and the college has never intervened to continue from continuing to abuse me and other faculty, nor to protect me from abuse and feel safe. I have done nothing wrong. There is not one scintilla of evidence that clearly establishes my misconduct and which warrants the administration of the death penalty, akin to the harshest sanction this college could take against me. I have taken a polygraph, ladies and gentlemen. The results are provided in this notebook, which clearly exonerates me of the charges. I offered to take a polygraph one year ago to prove my innocence. The college refused, but at my request, a polygraph was administered, which showed no evidence of any of the charges against me. A gentleman in this room, who is a vice chancellor, met with me in January of 2015 and found there was no clear and convincing evidence against me. This gentleman authorized the removal of an entire array of documents, which strangely found their way back into my file and has formed the basis, by Mr. Castillo, of bringing charges against me, which are... I'm sorry. I'm sorry for mentioning his name, and I'm running out of time. And my last thing that I want to say to you is...
Okay, Mr. Wax, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Jones, before your time starts, let's not mention any names or the office in which the person holds as you're talking to us.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that for me?
Not mention names, individuals' names, or the job or office that they hold as you're talking.
Is that in writing anywhere that I can refer to?
Huh?
Is that in writing anywhere that I can refer to?
Yes.
Where is it, please?
We don't have it. Go ahead and follow those instructions. Appreciate it. We will not allow you to mention names.
The procedures say that we're not going to...
Where are the procedures at?
In the public forum, that you're not to say negative comments about identified people.
Correct.
Thank you.
Can I... Is it okay to start?
As soon as the time goes.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, you did not hear my appeal. Shame on you. I'm really sorry that you had to go through what you did with your family, Mr. Scott. Unfortunately, I'm still going through that with a 16-year-old who underwent surgery before a double lumpectomy. We are still going through treatment right now. So my heart goes out to you, and so I hope God blesses your family. I've been going through this for about eight months now with my termination from Lone Star College Cyfair. Unfortunately, it is... I really do not understand how you can sit in these seats that you were voted in and not do the right thing. That's really shame on y'all. It really is, because the things that the little people go through, like myself and Mr. Wax and several other employees at Lone Star College, just Cyfair alone, the things that we go through, y'all don't have to go through. Y'all don't sit in our seats, and y'all don't walk in our shoes. The ramifications that the president or VP, and now you, allow is really shameful, because see, for eight months now, I've been having to try to fight for my job. I've had several losses, not to mention just my income alone. My family has been struggling. Sadly, my daughter has no insurance, and we are having to pay out of pocket. How am I to do that? Why is that okay? Why is that okay for me to struggle and to go through something based on a lie that somebody told? And you don't even have the courtesy to hear from me, but you hear from other people. Nobody else can tell my story like I can, and you don't even give me the opportunity to do so. It's obvious that you don't see me as an employee, because you don't even see me as a human being, a mom. You know, somebody that's given five years, dedicated five years to Lone Star College Cyfair. And to have it all taken away based on a lie is a shame. So I'm gonna ask you, what if your positions were taken from you based on a lie? How would you react to that? What would you do? You would fight. You would fight for your right. You would fight to have your integrity back. Your trustworthy is questioned. Everything about your character that you have built up over the years is being questioned. So how would y'all react to that? Again, you would fight for it. You would fight for it. I've been fighting for eight months. I'll go another eight months, just to have the truth be heard, just to be acknowledged that it was wrong. But not only wrong for what they did at the college, but wrong for what you are doing here, by not hearing people. That's all we want. We just want to be heard. And for five minutes, that's all I get, now a minute and 34 seconds, to try to plead with y'all, beg y'all to hear me, to hear my case, because, again, the things that I go through, y'all have no idea. Y'all have no idea what this has caused me and my family. Absolutely none. And again, to that, I say shame on y'all. Shame on y'all that y'all hold these seats that we put you in, and you don't do the right thing. I will close in a minute. But being rejected through this process, it does not feel good. It really doesn't. But you know, I'm a strong woman. I've been through a lot these past eight months. My daughter, seeing her cry, be scared, that is a hurt feeling. It is a hurt, hurt feeling, and you can't do anything about it. You have no insurance to protect her well-being, so you struggle, and you fight, and you save, and you go without, because that is your child, and that's what you have to do. And for y'all just to sit here and be okay with these decisions, shame on every last one of y'all for not doing the right thing. Again, I know my little small salary is nothing to y'all, but it's everything to me, because it provided security for my family, for my daughters, for my home, for my well-being. It provided her insurance. And to have that taken away, shame on y'all.
Let me introduce myself. I don't think we've ever met. My name is Chris Tredico. I'm the general counsel for the American Federation of Teachers. And someone you may not have known or may not have recognized, that I'm very passionate about helping people. And I'm passionate about when I think one of my client's rights have been violated or trampled on. In the last two weeks, I've tried two cases for teachers in administrative hearings, and I'm here tonight. Monday night of this week, I tried a case before the Spring Independent School Board, where they heard evidence. I got to cross-examine the district's witnesses. We went from 5:00 PM till 12:00 AM, representing the rights of an individual who they wanted to fire and did fire. But what they did was they heard evidence. They took the time, the effort, and the energy to sit and listen to all the evidence. They made the district call witnesses and let me cross-examine them. They let me call witnesses, and the district got to cross-examine those witnesses. They heard our arguments. They heard our legal arguments and our factual arguments. They did the things that the Fourteenth Amendment says you have to do when you're a governmental body. They did all of those things in protection of the rights of the individual who they were firing from their district after 16 years. I disagree with their decision, but I respect their process. I've come before you, I don't know how many times now. I've yelled at you. I've lost my temper. I lost my professionalism, because I don't like your process. Mr. Scott made a motion earlier about Jeff Wax, and he said that after 14 months, that's plenty of notice, therefore, we don't want to hear this. Respectfully, Mr. Scott, that's not the burden, is it? You said right before you made the motion that we have to show a procedural irregularity, yet the board voted on a motion that was about whether 14 months' notice was enough, and you didn't vote on whether or not we had showed you a procedural irregularity. And that's one of the problems I have with this process. It's the reason I come before you. It's the reason I lose my temper, because this policy is put together by Jell-O. There is no standard. There's no basis by which I can ever get before you and advocate for people that are losing their careers. You didn't vote. You didn't fire Jeff Wax. You didn't vote to not hear Jeff Wax's appeal, because I hadn't proven to you a procedural irregularity. You just decided that 14 months was enough. You violated your own policy tonight. You didn't do the right thing, and that's the problem I have with your policy. Did y'all get these books? Am I putting these together and spending thousands of dollars for nothing, or do y'all get these? In Jeff Wax's book, the biggest one I've made yet, 40-something exhibits, almost 50 exhibits, I hope you saw his polygraph. This case was based upon an allegation that he had done something to another employee. So we put him on a polygraph exam, a polygrapher who works for the great state of Texas, doing polygraph exams on sex offenders. That's what he does for a living. And he also works for private lawyers when they need some help, like I did. He passed that polygraph. He passed that polygraph that said there was no deception, that he wasn't lying about the fact that he didn't sexually harass anyone. The entire case was based on a false premise, but you don't get to hear that, because you won't hear our appeal. You won't hear the evidence. You won't look at the six, 10, 15 letters from students and parents saying how much Jeff Wax has helped them. You won't look at that evidence. Yet you'll vote on a false premise and not uphold your policy, and that's the problem I have. So I'm not gonna yell at you tonight, but I do want to point out that you're not doing the right thing. Tashimya Jones, she was let go again on a false premise. I showed you... And the problem I have with this procedural irregularity is I can never prove it to you. Now, you come out every time I come here, and you say, "This was vetted." And that's a direct shot, because the union was involved in the vetting process. I get it. But the policy you passed was not the policy you vetted, and that's the problem we have with it. The policy changed after it was vetted, and the procedural irregularity that you keep harping on was not in the policy when it was vetted through the union. And so we didn't get a chance to object to that. We didn't get a chance to object to the lack of due process, and we didn't get a chance to object to the fact that this board will never hear an appeal, because I can never show you with certainty a procedural irregularity. You vote on it in secret. You argue, you discuss it in secret. Your lawyers get to go back and discuss it, but I never get to discuss it. And quite frankly, and honestly, and you know this, I can never point out a procedural irregularity this board is ever gonna find. The very first appeal I brought to you, I pointed out a procedural irregularity, and you said that wasn't the procedural irregularity we meant, and you changed the policy. So we know it's put together by... That is true. We know it's put together by Jell-O, and we know I'll never be able to get before you to put the evidence on for you to make a real decision, and that's my issue. That's my issue with this policy. People are losing their careers, and you won't hear any evidence. You won't do like Spring Independent School District, their school board, any other board, any other board I've been through, colleges or school districts that hear evidence, that take the time, the effort, and the energy to listen to what's happening. So that's all I have. I know you thought I was gonna up here and yell at you. I'm sorry I disappointed you. I encourage you to rethink this policy. I'll sit down with you. I'll sit down with my dear friend Mary, and I'll help write a policy that provides at least a minimum of due process for your employees and your professors, and give them an opportunity to come before this board and show that they were right. Your policy allows for five levels of people, four or five, I can't remember now, to review this, but the review is done by the people who already signed off on the termination. Their decision was made before I ever get there. You are the only people who are independent in this process, and you won't hear us. There's no one I appeal to who hasn't already made a decision about the facts of the case before I get there. That's not due process. That's not a process by which anyone can have a meaningful review of their termination. So just give us a chance. Give these people a chance at someone who is independent, at someone who will hear the evidence with an independent mind, not already having made a decision to uphold the termination. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Several times over the last few months, including today, the Board of Trustees has been presented with the opportunity to hear appeals of grievances or changes in contract status from members of the Lone Star family who believe that decisions made in their cases were incorrect. Each of these times, the board has been called on to determine whether the appeal meets the very narrow criteria that a grievance must demonstrate in order to be heard under current policy. According to Board Policy 4.F.10.12, a subcommittee of the board makes a recommendation about whether or not the appeal should be heard. That recommendation is then voted on in open session. The procedures under which such a subcommittee operates are not set out in the policy manual explicitly, and the deliberations of that committee are not held in an open meeting. We know from the experiences of several employees that the employees file written requests and document the criteria under which they believe the appeal should be heard. In practice so far, neither the grievance nor their representatives have been interviewed to present their argument orally or to answer clarifying questions either in person or in writing. Since the process is closed, we do not know how these committees gather information from Lone Star Administration, if they do at all. If these discussions are held during the closed session of a regularly-called board meeting, and we do not know that they are, Section 551 of the Texas Government Code indicates that the college's counsel can be present in that meeting. We do know that the counsel for the grievance cannot be in that meeting. It is the AFT's hope that the ground rules work the same for both sides. In particular, if one side is interviewed verbally or in writing about whether that side believes the appeal should be heard, we hope that the other side would be granted the same opportunity. I'm going to go a little off-script here. I'm going to go a little off-script here to continue for an additional point of clarification, and Mr. Tridico mentioned this as well. Earlier in today's meeting, it was described how input was requested and received from many parties as the current grievance policy was written, and the AFT was very grateful that we were included in that process, and our appreciation for that is immense. And that is reported correctly. The sticking point that we are hitting with these particular grievances relate to the eligibility specifically of appeal to the board and the definition of procedural irregularity. And I want to remind all of us present that that portion of the policy was rewritten more recently, in the spring, I don't have the exact date with me, to create the current more narrow definition. That was not part of the discussion in which the AFT or other organizations were involved when we were sought, when input was sought. So I just want to point out that the goalpost moved a bit, and the grievance policy as it's currently in application is different from what we thought was happening at that time. So those are my thoughts for this evening, and I thank you so much for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Mario, I'd like for you to discuss our policy adoption procedure and how far in advance they're posted for public comment before we vote on them.
Yes, sir. So with regard to those particular, so Sections 1, 2, and 3, and then those sections that have been referenced tonight in Section 4, specifically the grievance policy, the termination policy, and the change of contract status policy, all were, since I've been here, and so some of those changes actually, so I've been here since August of 2015. When I got here in August of 2015, the first iteration of the grievance policy, the change of contract status policy, and the termination policy were kind of already on their way to the board. And so in November of 2015 is the first time that those policies got changed. Right? When I got here in August of 2015, I instituted a notice and comment process that mirrors the federal government. And so in addition to that, because of the sensitivity of Sections 1, 2, and 3, and those three sections in Section 4, I actually added another step of the Policy Review Committee. And so we actually met section by section and with those sections with the Policy Review Committee, which is three members of this board. Then we had to get it through that committee. Then we posted it again for 30 days to collect feedback from, and then we also get a first reading and a second reading. And so as I always tell people, even to change one or two words in the policy manuals, about a three-and-a-half-month process if everything goes right and everyone's on the same page.
So the policy that was adopted was on the agenda, and it was posted for 30 days worth of comments before it was voted on.
And I will represent to you that I personally had it emailed to Dr. Bergdahl, and that was adopted in February.
The one that we're discussing now?
Yes.
Mario?
Yes.
We can respond if it's pure fact?
Fact. Not having a debate, not talking about something that's not on the agenda, merely stating a fact or a policy interpretation.
Okay, I'll try.
Okay, and if you won't, if you don't do well, I'll stop you.
I want to explain again how this grievance policy itself came about.
Close your to the mic, Doc.
Huh?
They can't hear you talking to the mic.
The mic.
Put it on your chin.
I want to explain how this grievance policy as it is came about. Kyle, Linda, and I spent, well, literally, months working on this thing, looking at every word. And as I've said before, we would put it on the wall and study every word, and we wanted to be sure that we got a grievance policy that we wanted and that we approved of. And then we showed this policy to everybody before it was approved, including the AFT. They saw it then and maybe could have responded then, but apparently, they chose not to. That's their business. But we wanted everybody to see it, and I think everybody did, and we ended up finally with the policy that we wanted. We chose, all of us, Kyle, Linda, myself, all of us chose to let the administrative arm of Lone Star College make decisions about grievances. We wanted the administration to run the school, not the Board of Trustees. If you give it to the Board of Trustees, you give it to the possibility of politics, and we did not want that. We wanted the administration to focus on grievance policies. What, though, did we permit? What we said was, apart from the content of a grievance, if there are procedural irregularities of the policy, not designed irregularities that the critics thought were there, no. If there is a violation of the policy itself, then it would go to our grievance committee, which it did, and I'm on that grievance committee. And I can tell you, here's the brief that we got. It's pretty fat. I read this thing twice. I took notes on it. I paid very careful attention to all of the arguments that are here. I did not simply dismiss it by saying, "Well, I see no procedural irregularities, therefore, I'm not going to read it even." I did read it, and I read it closely, and I took notes. And I got in touch with the administration to ask questions about things, having read this full brief, and I got answers. And the answers that I got, which I cannot discuss here, convinced me that we were doing the right thing in not recommending this grievance appeal to the board. I say that again. I read this twice. I asked questions. I think finally, the position that the administration took was the right and fair position. Now, you may think I can't disagree with Mr. Tridico.
Yes, and now you're going a little far.
I'm going too far.
You're going a little.
All right.
So let's just state what.
All right. So there it is. That's how I arrived at this.
I think it's important to restate what the board can and cannot do in terms of, if it does hear an appeal, so that expectations are clear, that we cannot reinstate an employee, even if the board had heard the case and decided. All we can recommend is that it's sent back down to the level at which we found the procedural irregularity to have occurred, to rectify that irregularity, and to rehear it at that level, just so that expectations are clear when it comes to the board.
I would like to ask a point of clarification from Board Counsel. It's my understanding that state law does not impose upon the board an obligation to hear employee grievances.
Correct.
But the board may choose to do so, which we have done in the three policies that have been discussed. Choosing to do so, it is up to us to decide the parameters by which appeals will or will not come to us. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Board members. Let's move on to consideration of the consent agenda. If you will make a note of.
Mario, please come up.
So I do want to make a point of clarification. Although Professor Bergdahl and I are on sort of opposite ends of the issues, I don't want to misrepresent what actually happened. So I want to clarify something. I shared with him the policy that was ratified by the board in February. He did express at the time disagreement with it. So I wanted to be very clear that there's a difference between not sharing it with him and him agreeing with it. And I did share it with him, but he did express disagreement at the time. So I just wanted to clarify that, to give him the benefit of the facts.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Okay, back to the consent agenda. So far, the following items will be heard separately. Two, three, four, five, and six.
Could you?
An item eight has been withdrawn. Any other items?
Fourteen.
Any other items? We have items, again, two, three, four, five, six, and fourteen to be heard separately, and item eight to be withdrawn. Hearing none. Let's handle items that are still on the consent agenda, which is item one, nine through thirteen, fifteen through thirty-three. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We adopt those particular items. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post this. Motion carries.
What's seven?
Yep, seven.
That skipped seven?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Seven should be included with that particular group.
Why don't you say it one more time?
One.
Seven.
Seven, nine through thirteen, fifteen through thirty-three. Got it, okay.
Want a motion and a second again?
Yeah, let's go ahead and correct it. Thank you, Linda.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded that we adopt those items. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, Dr. Head, items two, three, and four. I think you wanted to make some comments on those items.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the board knows that two, three, and four are related to our bachelor's degrees, and the legislature approved those. So what's the next step are that you would approve us moving forward with it, and then we go to the Coordinating Board for approval, and there's a process they go through, and then we go through Southern Association for Accreditation, that's part of it, and then on the nursing part, we have to go to the Board of Nurses. So this is just the first step in a multi-step process that we have. So just want to make sure that you were aware that these are bachelor's degrees, and they are limited. And the other thing I want to point out is, these are for Lone Star College. Lone Star College, they are going to be located at various campuses, but it's not Lone Star College, Montgomery, or Lone Star College, North Harris, or University Park. It's Lone Star College bachelor's degrees, but they're going to be housed at different places. So, does that make sense?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Dr. Head, what would you say is the earliest that we would actually be able to put students?
We're shooting for fall of 2018 for the nursing program in particular. We think that's our greatest need, so that's, there's a lot that needs to happen, not from our standpoint, because we're pretty well organized on it. It is, it's these other agencies we have to deal with.
Okay.
Do you foresee any problems with the other agencies?
No, I don't.
All right. Any other question, Board members, on two through four? If not, we're going to take those items together since they're the same. I'd like to have a motion on items two, three, and four.
Can I just ask Steve, sir?
Absolutely.
What do you think my friends on other, the boards of universities have to say?
Well, we.
I've already had them question me.
Yeah. You know, we met with the universities. We spent a lot of time over this, and spent a lot of time with the legislature over this. We were very targeted in what we're doing, and there are universities, two things, with nursing, there's a huge need in our own community. We have 2,000 nurses here that have RN that need to move up.
That's not my point. That's not my question.
So some of them don't care for it because they think we're encroaching into their traditional offerings. They weren't meeting the need, though. That's why we did it, and that's what we've been talking with them about.
Okay.
So.
Okay. I like that answer.
If they were doing it, we wouldn't be doing it. Let's put it that way. How's that?
Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion on two, three, and four?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt items two through four. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, adopt recommended fiscal year 217 through 18 budget.
We just historically consider that separately.
Yeah, right, so I need to have a motion on that so that it be voted on separately.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt item five. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Discussion, discussion.
You want a discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. In March, we voted for student fee increases. I feel it would be disingenuous to vote for a budget that incorporates and utilizes those increased student fees, but I would like to applaud the finance staff who put together this budget, and everyone else who was included at the colleges, because this was the best presentation of the budget that I've received, the most clarity and transparency. And when I started to pepper you with questions and additional information, that was totally forthcoming, so I appreciate that. But because of the way I voted in March, I can't vote for it tonight.
Okay, so I assume we have eight, four, and one again.
We haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted yet.
And, no, we only have eight here.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, and then eight, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Okay, that's that. Those post?
Post.
Okay, seven, one.
Actually, I think it's six, one.
I think you left.
One, two, three.
Six, one, because Mary's not here and Art left.
Six.
Oh.
Six to one.
Six to one, thank you. All right. Item six, authorized a chance to submit grant applications and enter grant contracts.
Jennifer, could you come up and give a quick overview? This, I, we asked to consider this separately so that we could explain what the issue is.
Yes, the issue here simply is that to submit a grant application at times does potentially commit us, so that is why we need some authorization from the board prior to submitting those applications. Anything less than $100,000, we already have, the chancellor has authority to submit those applications. So what this is asking for is that authority to do that for applications of $100,000 or more, but less than $4.5 million. Part of this is some of the grants require a match, either by cash or in kind. We do state in here fiscal impact that anytime we submit a grant that would require that, it would only come from within the existing budget as approved by the Board of Trustees, but this would allow us to meet any deadlines that we need to for grant applications.
Okay, help me out on this. You said the chancellor already has authority up to $100,000, and this particular, the way you have it stated now, gives him authority from $100,000 to?
4.5 million.
Right.
Yes.
So my question is, and this is just a technicality, why don't we just say the chancellor has authority up to 4.5 million?
We could have, I suppose we could have. It was just the difference of that was just to make it clear what it is the board is approving. You're not approving the authority between, less than $100,000 because the chancellor already has that authority. So the additional authority that you are providing is the $100,000 up to the $4.5 million.
This approval, though, is only for grants. That's all we're talking about.
Yes. Grant applications.
Right. Why doesn't it say a particular grant?
What we're seeing here is the grant money that's, that we're applying for. What is the in-kind that we would be responsible for?
Sometimes it's just work that we have to provide, so in-kind might be staff hours.
What is the dollar amount?
It depends on the grant. So this is not for a particular grant. This is to authorize us to submit applications for grants, so it'll depend on each individual grant.
Okay, so I have kind of a related question then, I think, because what I heard you say is we're, you're asking for authorization to apply for grants that we don't yet know about, that that we don't yet know about, that might require an in-kind or a cash match. If we don't know about them, how can we give that approval? I'm missing something.
There's a lot of grants that we do apply for on an annual basis and continue to receive them, so a lot of those are already in the budget.
Okay.
And if there's any new ones, we would not apply unless we had an identified source to cover that.
Beth, if you want to...
I guess that's what I'm confused about, because you said you would take that money out of the budget, but if it hasn't been approved in the budget, how, how can we take it out of the budget?
Beth is our executive director. Beth is over our grants program.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. In-kind is, is very difficult to understand, and I will say...
No, it's easy.
When, when in-kind is requested in a grant, every particular grant has its own parameters. And so a college can only, only put forward in, in, as in-kind match, what they can afford, the resources they can afford to dedicate to the task of that grant. So the college president will, will have had to approve the use of those resources towards that grant before it would be submitted.
Well, and then it comes back up through finance, and it comes through the Chancellor's, it goes through finance, it goes through legal, then it comes back up through the Chancellor's office.
Yes, sir. The, the president approves, then it is approved by, by RDA, by the CEO, goes through the, the finance office. It goes under review by Office of General Counsel before it arrives on Dr. Head's desk for signature.
Well, I think if you all could address the timing issue, because that's, that's the issue here.
The timing issue is definitely important here. Very frequently, grants, even grants from, for two or three millions of dollars will be put forth with, you know, in between 30 to 60 days turnaround time. So you have to have developed your, your whole program design, get all the authorizations, and be ready to submit within a 60-day period, sometimes less. And we'll, we are fearful of missing out on funding opportunities because we would have missed the window of bringing it to you if we do so individually.
I think the part that's missing, I, I see what your concern is, so how much are we actually committing to? In other words, when we apply for the grant, it may be a $3 million grant. What's missing here is what the limit would be on what we commit. So when we apply for that grant, until we certify that we really want to do the grant, we could be accepted for the grant and not accept it if that were the case.
That is absolutely yes, the case.
What, what is the range for the commitments on our part? Just a ballpark?
The, the largest commitment I've ever been responsible for is a 50% commitment, and typically those are far less than a million dollars.
For, say that again?
For less than a million dollars.
So this appendix here shows a total of 600 and, 6,500,000, 6.5 million. Is that what you're asking us to approve as a estimate of the commitment? Or is that the, the total of those agreements?
But, what does he...
The offer, what, what the offer on the grant would be?
Which one are you talking about?
Which one?
It's, it's...
Item six. He's looking at appendix A.
Okay. I'd like to refresh my memory before I speak out of turn.
Okay. This? Oh.
Is it appendix A that's in here?
Oh.
So those are the, what you...
Again, you've got a list of award amounts for different grants.
Those are the grants that were awarded in active with Lone Star College in 2017. Is that the appendix you're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the list of grants.
Back-up documentation.
Okay, so... Okay, this was for 2017. It came out to a total of 28,103,000 dollars and some change. What was the commitment that we made for 2017 for this amount?
For, for that amount of money, it was a fraction of that amount of money. I wish, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have an exact dollar total for you right now, but I'm going to say...
10%?
I'm going to say 10%.
5%?
I'm going to say 10%.
Okay.
I can make sure, I can make sure we follow up with the precise number.
Okay. Okay, that's the kind of thing we're going to be, when you're asking us to approve an amount, that's the kind of thing we're going to want to know.
I suppose probably just a simple question. Do we have examples of grants we've missed out on because we didn't have this policy?
There, there have been grants we've decided not to develop because we were short on time. Grants from Department of Labor, things like that. We've decided not to pursue that because we knew we didn't have time, rather than pushing everybody under the wire. So if we don't, if we know we're not going to develop it, we don't spend the time to develop a final budget and push that forward.
I think though, it would help...
So it's not as though you submitted one and then said, "Oh, wait, we can't get the money from the Board in time." Rather, you just said, "Well, this isn't one that would ever be able to meet X Board meeting, so we just won't even go after it."
Correct.
Okay.
But I do think, I mean, I, I hear what their concerns are, and I'm, so if we came back, we want approval to move ahead with some of these big grants. When we get the grant, though, we're going to know what the matching is, and we, we come back in to the Board at that time. We had a long discussion about this when we put it on the agenda to begin with over the process of this.
Join. There's only two mics, though.
So I'm the reason that we have this, because yes, Dr. Scott, I stopped a grant application about, I think it was about a year and a half ago. A grant application came through my desk, and it was for about, I think, 480,000 dollars. I'd have to go check exactly which grant it was. And so when I get grants, I cross-check them against Board authority to make sure that we're not committing taxpayer money without approval. I refused to stamp, stamp that grant. Without my stamp, Dr. Head won't sign it. And so, yes, we did lose out on that, and I was real popular with the grant people.
I'm sure.
He speaks the truth. We have to, we have to provide the, the Board agenda item for, for review when we send through the packet so that they don't have to go searching for it. It's very thorough.
I have a request, which is...
Yes, sir.
If the policy passes, and as we're sort of getting used to it, could we have examples submitted to us of this policy solving a future problem? Something along those lines, like, because we would all really like to hear about a four or five million dollar grant that we get, right?
So would I. So would I. What, what we, what we like, what we're trying to avoid is us having to become ineligible for funds because we can't execute the contract in a timely fashion.
I, I guess what would have made me understand it a little better is this seems to be asking us to give authority to apply for grants up to 4.5 million dollars. But our concern isn't the amount of the grant, it's the amount of the match.
I hear that.
Okay, and so it would have been more helpful to say that you're asking for authority to apply for grants where the match is up to a certain amount.
That, that would work on the timing. If we had authority to apply for the grant, and then if it's more than the 100,000, we would come back in and ask the Board for authority to, to match that. Wouldn't that meet what we're trying to do here?
And in the future, I think we...
It would allow us to move on, but the reality is when we're notified, we would have a Board meeting...
Back. So that's actually, so the way, not to get too into the weeds legally, but your proposal for the grant is actually an offer that as soon as it's granted is an acceptance. And so the very application itself is the contract. And so that's the problem. We can't submit an application and then get it, the thumbs up, and then come back. The thumbs up is the acceptance of the offer, and then we have a binding contract legally.
At the time you submit it, though, do you know what the match is?
Yes.
Right. And sometimes it's more than 100,000 dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
That's why you need, that's why they need approval.
So I've stopped them before, so that's why we're here.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? All of those in favor of item six on the consent agenda, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Poses?
Nay.
Want to pose, thank you. Okay. Item 14. Dave, you, you pull that one. What's the question?
No question, I just want...
Huh?
No question, I just want to abstain.
Oh, okay, all right. All of those in favor, want, need a motion and a second on item 14.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved in second that we adopt item 14. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? One, abstention, thank you. Okay, let me see where we are now. I lost my spot there.
I don't know how to do it either, sorry.
I'm trying.
I've seen it.
Yeah, okay. Jennifer, I'm sorry for disrupting you. Financial report.
Yes, for the financial report. This is for June 30th, 2017, month end. It's the 10th month of the fiscal year. And if you turn to page one, you can see revenues as a percent of budget is at 95% for this time of the year. And you can see, as we have continued to show month after month, that this is trending much higher than prior years. This continues to be for the same reason of tax revenues coming in higher than what was budgeted. If you turn to page two, actual expenditures as a percent of budget. At this same time of, to last year, we are at 77.5% of expenditures, and this is roughly in line with prior years. So, so far, we are trending well in expenditures, and we are continuing to watch that spending closely as we enter, right now, the last month of the fiscal year. And finally, turning to page three of the report, statement of revenues and expenditures. You can see there in the forecasted variance, our forecast this month remains unchanged from last month, which is a projected 14.9% cash reserve balance as of August 31st, 2017. That's where we're currently projecting to end this fiscal year. Thank you very much. That concludes the monthly report.
Appreciate you. Board members, are there any future agenda items? Huh? She didn't, she didn't have a report. With that, have a good evening.